Hearing none. I will move on to approval of minutes of June 27th, July 11th, July 18th, and August 30th. Nancy has been busy. And I will take a motion to approve those minutes.
Move approval. Second.
Anyone have any comments or corrections? Hearing none. I will take a vote. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Moving on to presentations. The town has a long history of depending on volunteers for key functions in the town. And we, as council, applaud all of the efforts that volunteers have contributed to the town. And as stated in a release by President Obama, "We celebrate the selfless individuals around our country who have channeled their civic virtues through volunteerism. Devoted to a cause bigger than themselves, volunteers help drive our country's progress, and day in and day out, they make extraordinary sacrifices to expand promise and possibility." This evening, we recognize two volunteers who have collectively given over 25 years of dedication to this town. And Sophie will give us a little bit more detail about those that we recognize this evening.
One of the issues about volunteers, and I would say most definitely the two that we're going to recognize tonight, is they love to do the work, and oftentimes, it's difficult to get them to accept recognition for what they do. We have two individuals that have just gone well above and beyond. I'd like to start first by recognizing Phil Ruck. Phil Ruck is currently the Chair of our Planning Board. He's actually been on the Planning Board since 2005. And I don't know how much people have paid attention to the Planning Board, but just in the five years that I have been here, it is a very difficult board to manage in terms of council adopts ordinances, and the Planning Board's job is to look at each individual application that comes before it. And oftentimes, the council's ordinance might not work specifically for a neighborhood or a specific development. And the Planning Board spends an awful lot of time hearing from the community and trying to find resolutions and put performance standards in place so that development that comes in is most compatible with the community. I've had the opportunity to watch Phil as Chair from 2011 on, and he has been awe-inspiring. I have seen him deal with incredibly tough situations, and he is able to facilitate in a way that allows citizens to be heard and for Planning Board members to contribute in appropriate ways. I have watched him work with our Town Planner, Evan, behind the scenes and spend hours preparing for the meetings. He doesn't just show up and facilitate. He gives an awful lot of his time and energy. It is, you know, often we get people who want to contribute, and I've watched Phil give up his own personal and professional needs in order to make sure that he has fulfilled the needs of the town. And it has been awe-inspiring. And Evan and I wanted to make sure that Phil got some recognition. When we look at the most recent comp plan effort, Phil led that charge as Chair of the Planning Board. And I sat through many of those meetings, and it was definitely like herding cats at times. He did a remarkable job. And the town of Orano is just really blessed to have Phil at the helm of the Planning Board, and we would be remiss if we didn't acknowledge his incredible work.
Say something if you'd like.
Thank you. I appreciate that. That's very nice. As you say, you know, it does take a group of good volunteers to help a town. Fortunately, I have some really good role models, and I do think of people that have given so many more years than me. That gentleman right there is a great model. Andy Parkins comes to mind. I think he gave 30 years to the Planning Board. So there's a lot of people that actually, you know, do their work to help the town where we can. I think we're all in it for the Planning Board paycheck, I believe, so, yeah. So that'll be great. But for the moment, the pin in the...
Which is zero.
Yeah, the pin in the certificate, that'll be great. I appreciate that. Thank you.
The second person that we want to recognize tonight is Dave Thompson. And I've been fortunate to work pretty closely with Dave in my role as Town Manager in the five years I've been here. Dave has served us in many different ways. Let me just give you a flavor. He's been on the Planning Board since 2001. He's an active member. He has been on the Tree Board since 2001. In fact, he was the Chair from 2004 to 2011. Retirement from chairmanship didn't suit him, so he has been Chair, a co-Chair, since 2014 continues. He is on the Trails Committee. He's been there since 2001. He has served as the Chair of the Trails Committee since 2003. He was on the Kelly Road Business Park Advisory Committee for the entire term, 2011 to 2014. He was on the Comp Plan Committee from 2012 to 2015. And he serves as a representative on the Orano Economic Development Corporation, which he has done since 2012. So as you can see, Dave has retired to volunteerism. And the thing, one of the things I really appreciate about Dave is that he has lots of great ideas. He too herds lots of cats. But when he wants to do a project, he doesn't just come to me and say, "Sophie, I'd really like to," whatever the answer is. It's, "Sophie, I really think we need to do this, and I've talked with Rob Yerxa, or Mitch Stone, or before that, Norm Poirier, and here's what the budget is for the project. And oh, by the way, we need a DEP permit by rule, and here's the application. I just need a check for $74. And I've arranged to have the prisoners come and help, and it's all packaged up, and you just can't say no to Dave." Dave is always there, and he is not, while he supervises, there's no question about who's the boss. Rob Yerxa tells me frequently that Dave is clearly in charge. But he doesn't sit back. When you watch a project happening, he is knee-deep in it, usually on a piece of equipment or with something in his hand, shoveling or building. He is amazing. And the other thing that makes him very amazing for me is when he pops into my office and says, "Can I have a minute of your time?" I can actually time him. He is that concise. It is, it is truly, "I need you for this." From a staff perspective, much like Evan relies on Phil for the Planning Board, you have multiple departments that are relying on Dave, not only for the work that he does, but the perspective he brings. He shares so much with us. He has years of experience that we don't have, and he is gracious with his time and his talents. And the town of Orano is just very blessed to have Dave with us.
Well, Sophie said I'm more of an operator than a speaker. I'd rather be out on a tractor with my chainsaw. Excuse me. I certainly appreciate this. And I also appreciate the opportunity the town has given me to serve. Unlike Ray Barone, I would like to thank my wife for all her help.
Thank you so much. We will now move on to public hearings. And just to remind everyone that we will have the public hearings, and then the orders for the various licenses will be part of the consent agenda unless council decides to pull them off for a particular reason. So we will move on to public hearing A to consider a vitueller's license for Orano Trampoline Park, 6 Stillwater Avenue.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the council. I'm Dave Mylan, the Economic Development Director. And this is a new business here in town, and the application has been submitted. All inspections have been performed, and the staff is recommending approval of licenses.
Does anyone wish to speak for or against?
I'm wondering, is the vitueller's license for the trampoline park, is that serve alcohol?
No.
No, just regular?
Just food.
Okay, terrific.
Anyone else wish to speak for or against the issuing of this license? Hearing none. I'll close public hearing A. And because there's so many, I'll quickly ask council if you have any questions. Anyone regarding this? No? Dave, they are open, is my understanding?
They are. I heard from our Assistant Town Manager, who tried it out this weekend, and she is about three and a half inches taller now, but they had a great time.
Good. And she's, no broke a bone, so that's good.
No.
All right. We will move on to public hearing B to consider a vitueller's license for Marsh Island Brewing, LLC, 2 Main Street. Dave?
This is a, there's an existing brewery at the facility, and what they're, what they've been doing is adding, the vitueller's license to be able to add food to their sales. Bill has worked with them quite a bit to make sure that they get all of their state licenses and the local permits that we've needed throughout this process. Some of the ones are happening, are not necessarily happening in quick order. So what we're asking tonight, though, is for the council to consider a conditional license that as soon as these required state licenses are acquired, that they'll be able to begin their business here.
Does anyone wish to speak for or against the issuing of this license?
Have the licensee here if she wants to say anything.
How about the great experience you've had working with Orano?
No, everybody's been very accommodating and helpful. A little bit of confusion with the state, the Department of Agriculture. Thought I had what I needed, and I need an additional license from DHS because, I think, because it's ceded. So that has been submitted. The state tells me that it should be, they should be able to expedite it because we're on city water and sewer. So everything's been submitted and pending an inspection. I would request a conditional license. That one should, I believe, should be through. We hope to open on the 23rd.
Great. Ma'am, would you mind just stating your name for the record?
My name is Alice Swett.
Thank you.
If I could, this is an opportunity for you to tell the community and those who are watching on TV what you plan to do and where you're located. That might be...
We are located at the bottom of Main Street. We have Swett's Tyranado and Marsh Island Brewing. The front bay, we're renovating into a tasting room. So we will provide tasting for our own products. And just because I believe if you're drinking beer, you should have something to eat, we'll have a basic menu, snack-type wraps and chips. We've used all repurposed wood or natural wood for the building, and so it should be quite nice. And it's industrial look inside, you know, still got the concrete floors, and so we're excited about it.
Great.
Thank you.
What are your hours?
I don't have set hours. I believe tentatively, Monday through Wednesday, four to 10:00. Thursday and Friday, four to, no later than midnight. I think from our, what people are telling us, things quiet down around 10:30. So I don't really want to post hours until we see how business is. And then on the weekend, open a little earlier, like Sunday, we'd close by 7:00. And Saturday, maybe open at noon and close at 10:00. We're kind of going to feel it out based on business.
So you're saying you're going to close at 10:00 on Mondays?
Yes.
Okay, let's get this going.
It's not till the 23rd.
It'll be your bet.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak? All right. Hearing none. I will close public hearing B. Council, do you have any other comments? Yep. Okay. I'll open public hearing C to consider a vitueller's license for Leadbitter's Orano, 232 Main Street. Dave?
All inspections have been completed. Everything's paid, and the staff is recommending approval.
Okay. Does anyone wish to speak for or against this license? Hearing none. I will call, close public hearing C. Does anyone on council wish to comment? All right. I will move on to public hearing D to consider a Class 1 malt, spirituous, and vinous liquor license and vitueller's license for Orano's House of Pizza, Inc., 154 Park Street. Dave?
This is, they have an existing takeout business that is currently open at this location, and this particular, the additions to this are adding a sit-down restaurant. Again, waiting for the completion of that restaurant to be completed. We're asking for the conditional approval, pending final inspection after the completion of the construction. All licenses current, taxes are paid.
Great. Does anyone wish to speak for or against the issuing of these licenses to the Orano House of Pizza? No one? I'll close public hearing D and ask council if there's any comments. Hearing none. I'll move on to public hearing E to consider a Class 1 malt, spirituous, and vinous liquor license and vitueller's license for Harvest Moon, LLC, 18 Mill Street.
All inspections have been completed. Taxes and fees have been paid, and the staff is recommending approval.
All right. Anyone wish to speak for or against the issuing of this license?
Is that us?
That's you.
Sure, I'll say a few words. Hey, thank you for hearing us today. My name's Zach Richardson. To clarify, we're only seeking a beer and wine.
Okay.
Okay. I thought there was, I thought you said malt liquor or spirit.
Well, it's Class 1.
It's all the same?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyway, so, thank you. You know, we're looking to, as you know, we've extended our hours to 8:00 PM to better serve the community. And we are looking to have a light selection of beer and wine to accommodate the later hours and for anyone that may want to have a beer or a glass of wine with their lunch if they so choose.
Great.
So thank you very much, and have a great night.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? No one? I will close public hearing E. Counselors, any comments? Thank you very much. Moving on to public hearing F to consider a Class 1A hotel malt, spirituous, and vinous liquor license special amusement permit for music, dancing, and entertainment, and vitueller's license for Black Bear Inn and Conference Center for Godfrey Drive. Dave?
The, all inspections have been completed. Taxes and fees have been paid, and the staff is recommending approval.
All right. Anyone wish to speak for or against the issuing of this license? No one? Close public hearing F. Council have any comments? All right. Moving on to public hearing G to consider an automobile graveyard and/or junkyard permit for LaPointe Enterprises, Inc., 201 Kelly Road. Dave?
Staff has performed an inspection and is recommending approval of a license.
All right. Anyone wish to speak for or against the issuing of this license?
Thank you. I'm Dan LaPointe, 201 Kelly Road, Orano operator. I live at this facility. We've done a lot of work late, and we have several agreements on the table, which we're working on at this point. I appreciate the town working with us. We've been here a few years. If you want to talk about the family that came before it was a town, perhaps maybe there'd be a contest as to who was here first. I really appreciate you renewing our license this year. And as I say, we've done a lot of work, and we'll continue to do so. We aspire to be much like Silver's, and we're working towards that end. And I think that says about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan. Does anyone else wish to speak for or against the issuing of this license? Hearing none. I'll close public hearing G. And any comments by counselors? No one else? All right. Moving on to public hearing H to consider an automobile graveyard and/or junkyard permit for the town of Orano off Taylor Road. Dave?
The staff has performed the required inspection of the property and is recommending approval of a license.
Anyone wish to speak for or against? Hearing none. We'll move on, close public hearing H. Any comments by counsel? Hoping that junkyard is in good shape. Public hearing I to consider an automobile graveyard and/or junkyard permit for Silver's Auto Parts, Inc., 485 Main Street. Dave?
Again, staff has performed an inspection, and Silver's is obviously trying to make themselves as much like LaPointe as they can, and they passed successfully. And staff is recommending the permit.
Does anyone wish to speak for or against the issuing of this license? Uh-oh.
Oh, no, there we go.
Now the competition starts.
There's no competition. Mike, the Serodas, the whole family is lifelong friends and absolutely enjoy them being, I mean, I can pick up a phone anytime for a part, and we work out the details. Mike and his family are an asset to the community. They've often contributed, and I just can't say enough good about them, that maybe I have something for them to aspire to. That's a little beyond me right now.
Thank you, Dan. Does anyone else wish to speak for or against? Hearing none. I will close public hearing I. Counsel have any comment? Nope.
Old woman fuzzy now.
Moving on to public hearing J to consider Maine Municipal Association Model General Assistance Ordinance, appendices A through D for the period of October 1, 2016, to September 30, 2017, to be in compliance with Title 22 MRSA, Section 4, 305, subsection 4. Got a new player, Shelley.
Yes. Good evening. I am Shelley Crosby, your town clerk. I also work within this program to offer residents in the community who may find themselves in an unfortunate situation assistance. This program is a program that is run in each and every community in the state of Maine. It works in partnership with state and federal agencies to be sure that no one is in a situation of not having a basic need met. It is not meant to be a repeat program where someone comes to us once, and then we see them back month after month. It is meant to be an advocate program in which we can assist them one time, bridge the gap, maybe point them towards a new service, and then move them forward so that they can improve on their financial and/or home situation. For FY '16, we saw 44 cases. Of 44 cases, 19 of those received some level of assistance. Assistance may have been as small as providing a bag of groceries or as large as actually providing rental assistance. We also help with bus tickets and anything which is approved under the guidelines. What you have before you tonight are the actual maximum guidelines. You see these on an annual basis, and on an annual basis, they are examined across the circuit breakers in different communities and different counties on what is a fair and appropriate amount to match. The state does reimburse us at 70% of anything that is an approved expenditure that is approved through this office. If we end up in a situation where we're not quite sure if a person meets the guidelines or not, we have a 1-800 number that we can call down to DHHS, and we have a person on the other end of the phone that actually has access to records that we do not, and they can assist us in the decision-making process. We can record that, and that assists when we submit our report for a refund. Our budget last year was $17,200. Of that budget, we spent $10,000. So of the $10,000, I would have submitted an annual report on a monthly basis, and I would have been seeking the 70% reimbursement. Of the 19 cases that we served, there were 49 men, women, and children helped in this community. So the program has done what it's intended to do. In order to apply, an applicant actually has to call the office or come in to get an application. They have to complete the application, make an appointment. We sit down, we have a face-to-face. If there is a situation where someone can't come in, then we certainly will make accommodations to take care of that scenario. We also assist with the Salvation Army for Penobscot County, and so when there is an area where someone may not completely meet the guidelines, then there are some fundings that we can help with that. So, does anyone have any questions?
The only thing I would add about these guidelines is that they're provided to us each year through a partnership with Maine Municipal Association and the Department of Human Services. When we look at the guidelines, council really is not given a whole lot of choice as to whether or not they accept all of them, except for Appendix C, which is the housing. In each community, you're supposed to just do a quick survey to make sure that the amount of housing assistance, maximum amount, would actually cover a rent here. Shelley and I did that. It seems like a fair amount for what we see. If council wanted to, you could go through the process of going through a housing market analysis. And then next year, if you did that, you could adopt your own numbers if DHS approved them. So that's the only one you really have a choice about. So just to tell you, it's public hearing, but you don't have a lot of choice.
Is there a substantial increase from last year to this year? No? No? Okay. All right. Are you guys set? So I will, is there anyone that wishes to comment on this? General Assistance Ordinance, hearing none. We'll close in public hearing J. Thank you very much, Shelley. And I will move on to acknowledge, oh, I'm sorry, does any counselors have comments on J? No? Right. Moving on to acknowledgements by council members. We took the month of August off, so we're all fresh and ready to go this month. Jeff, do you have anything?
I don't have anything this evening, no. Thank you.
Tom?
Well, I just wanted to welcome back all the students, staff, and faculty, and say a friendly hello to everybody that's new.
Likewise, like to welcome back the students. Also sort of commend the work done in the parking lot here in the Agamusa and behind Pat's Pizza. I think they did a fantastic job with that.
Thank you. Tom?
Ditto on those previous comments, and I would like to acknowledge the passing of longtime Orano resident Mary Ryan, who passed away this past month. A volunteer in many different community organizations, and she'll be missed.
It was nice to see that we were named one of the top 50 safest communities in America for college campus communities.
Oh, wow. Didn't know that. That's great. Thank you.
Excuse me, Sophie says top 30.
Oh.
Wow.
I'll still take it.
Still behind Durham.
All right. We'll move on to the consent agenda. No, sorry, I'm sorry. We'll move on to unfinished business, which we don't have any. So number eight, the consent agenda. And I'd just like to point out on the consent agenda that there is several public hearings that will be set for next month, and so people should stay tuned to the agenda and come in and comment on any of those items. And I will take a motion... And I will take a motion to move the consent agenda.
I have a question.
Sure.
There were several items on our public hearing for licenses that were identified as conditional. Do we want to remove those from the consent agenda and deal with them separately or how are we going to handle that?
So the way I wanted to handle it to make it most efficient for you, in the order, they are conditioned. So if you wanted to change the order, you would take them off.
Very efficient. Thank you.
I asked the same thing, Tom. Sorry. All right. Any other questions? So I still think I'm waiting for a motion on the consent.
I would move the consent agenda. Second?
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the consent agenda? Tom and Jeff, are you in favor of the consent?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Passes unanimously. All right. Got to find the new business here. Okay. New business. Order 16161. Order approving an ordinance amendment to the town of Orno ordinances, Chapter 18, Land Use, Section 18-138, to allow the renting of an accessory dwelling unit in an accessory structure as well as in the single-family dwelling itself. I will take a motion, please. I have a second, please. All right. Clint, second. So Dave, I guess you're on for this?
Well, I would say to you that unfortunately for you, that you're getting the B team tonight. The A team, our planner, is down attending the Red Sox Orioles game today. So we...
In his official capacity as planner?
Obviously. He's checking to make sure that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. Trying to get a three-game, three-game lead. Madam Chair, members of the council, regarding this ordinance, and for those at home, maybe it would help if I kind of give a brief presentation on the process that this, the disordance has...
That would be great. We've seen it a couple of times, but public probably should know the process.
So, back on, on May 18th of this year, the planning board was asked to hold a, a public hearing on the proposed amendment to allow accessory dwelling units into accessory structures. At that hearing, they did not receive any public comment, but they did discuss a concern raised by the town council's Community Development Committee. The planning board recommended allowing accessory dwelling units in accessory structures as consistent with the comprehensive plan and a form of rental housing that with the requirement of owner occupancy on the property, it has been and likely will continue to be controlled with this additional provision. However, it recommends adding to the amendment a setback requirement for the accessory structure to assure that the dwelling unit is not too close to the living quarters on an adjacent property and to facilitate access by firefighting equipment if needed. That was their recommendation coming forward. Their, their proposal, the planner's proposal with the planning board's recommendations states that if an accessory dwelling unit is in an accessory structure, the accessory structure shall be set back at least 15 feet from the property's rear and side property lines and at the time of the accessory dwelling unit is created, at least 20 feet from the nearest principal structure with the dwelling unit on any adjacent property. I'll just repeat that last part is at least 20 feet from the nearest principal structure with a dwelling unit on an adjacent property. An existing accessory structure that does not contain an accessory dwelling unit as of the date of the adoption of the ordinance and is located closer than these distances may not be used as an accessory dwelling unit. So far, so good. On, moving forward to June 6th, the, at the committee meeting, the, the council's committee recommended to forward the proposed ordinance amendment with the planning board's recommendation to the July 11th council meeting agenda for a public hearing. On June 20th, at a committee meeting, there, because a couple of council members had requested revising the ordinance amendment language regarding accessory dwelling units and accessory structures, it was brought up for discussion again. The planner was asked to look into minimum lot size options as well as to a question as to how to address a change in ownership from an owner occupied to non-owner occupied property, which I thought was a really good question. Really hadn't thought of it at the time and we came up with a pretty good solution. We came back a week later, June 27th, at the council meeting and the planner proposed a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet with a 15-foot setback requirement from the property lines and a 20-foot setback from the adjacent property, adjacent structures, excuse me. He stated that this would affect about 130 of the 700 single-family owner occupied homes in town. The planner also noted that the property owner will be required to register the accessory dwelling structure with the town and sign an agreement to have the structure registered at the Penobscot Registry of Deeds. There was more conversation about the, about the minimum lot size, that 10,000 lot size and due to, because of that continued conversation, ultimately the council made the, a change and was recommending that be reduced to 8,712 feet, square feet of property or from .25 acres to .2. So it was a little bit of a change to that. And also we changed that the town will record the property at the Penobscot Registry of Deeds at the owner's expense. So that's where we came moving forward to that. We had the, the public hearing on, the council had a, a public hearing on July 11th where there was some further discussion about the lot sizes and grandfathering existing properties. But in the end, the council accepted all of those recommendations or listened to all of those, those comments. After the public hearing, we moved forward to, last week, that the council discussed this one last time and it was recommended to remain the same, to leave it as it was being proposed. So that last revision and what you have before you as the, as the ordinance is what is being considered tonight. I hope that was...
Very comprehensive. All right. Do you, does council have any further comments or discussions regarding this?
Yeah, I've raised a number of objections to this change along the way and the council indulged me and made a lot of changes to the proposed language, which I appreciated greatly. But I, I personally still feel that this is not, not a good thing to do and represents a continued erosion of the integrity of our, some of our residential areas in town. So...
Anyone else? Comments? All right. Hearing none. I will take a vote on Order 16161. All those in favor? All those opposed? So Order 16161 passes 5 to 1. All right. Moving on to Order 16162. Order authorizing the purchase of two carousel tables from Landscape Forms of Michigan for the Library Village Green in the amount of $4,577.65 from the Helen Park Trust Fund. Could I have a motion, please?
Second?
All right.
Lori Carpenter, Director of the Public Library. Five years ago, the Orno Public Library Foundation set out to raise funds for the Orno Village Green and this past spring, they were successful in completing the fundraising and hiring Sargent Corporation to do the construction behind the library, which was complete last month. Hope you've all had a chance to go down and take a look because it's, it's pretty impressive. Right now, the hardscape has been finished with the granite seating, the pergola and the patio, as well as the stairs and pathways. Next spring, the placement of the, the granite benches will be put in, as well as trees, shrubs, and gardens. So one thing that wasn't considered originally was furniture for the patio. Realized it pretty quickly when we saw how big the patio actually was, which is 24 by 20 feet. So through a private solicitation, we received a donation of six L.L. Bean Adirondack chairs, which are out there right now. And what we'd like to do is to fill the space, because right now they're, they're little tiny chairs on, on the patio, with two tables. Sarah, Kenny, the president of the foundation, I considered a number of options and came up with the carousel table made by Landscape Forms of Michigan, just in keeping with the aesthetics of the space. We really wanted to steer away from looking like a fast food place. So I have supplied you all with a brochure about the carousel tables. They are powder coated metal, conducive to conversation and individual seats are comfortable to sit in and they won't walk away because they're built in. They've been doing this for almost 50 years. They come with a three-year warranty and they assure me, I talked to a representative, that in all weather, staying out in all weather, they will last 15 to 20 years. Also, since 2005, the town's been receiving annual income from the Helen El Park Trust to be used for general purposes for the benefit of the library. And for the past two years, the library's received approximately $900 each year and I believe that's been ongoing since 2005. And the current balance right now is $4,634.90. The cost of the two tables would be $4,577.65, which includes a 10% discount that they're giving us as well as sales tax and shipping and handling. So this doesn't usually come under the council because the managers usually can approve something under $5,000. But since it came from a trust established in the town, as well as it not being part of the regular budget, we thought it best to bring it to you. Any questions?
So are we getting the ones with the back or without the back?
Thank you. Without the back. Without the back. It seems like that would be easier. And we'll be getting them made with holes in the middle so that we can put umbrellas in if, if we need to. Right now, we have the sail shade up and it does provide shade during part of the day, but there are times in the day when it doesn't provide complete shade.
And just out of curiosity, how many are we getting and what size are they? Are they the fours?
Two. We're getting two and I think the diameter width of these seats is 83 inches.
Is that like a six model or is that a four?
It's four. Yeah. And there is an option to put five with a space for a wheelchair, but that's more expensive. I don't have that price, but I had hoped that we could do it with four seats, but you, the way that they're constructed, you can only do it with a five-seat configuration.
Great. Do you see having outside events?
Yes. Yeah. And just, we're already seeing people out there using the wifi off-hours as well as after storytime, parents and their kids will go out there and have a snack. We, right now, we have a plastic picnic table that just doesn't quite do it the space justice. So they're sitting on that table, using it, but we're already seeing a lot of use.
Great. Anyone else have any questions or comments?
Some really nice Adirondack chairs sitting out there, too. Those were given to us by L.L. Bean.
Right. Nice. And Officer Lesky made sure that we have them locked at night. So everybody's doing their job.
Great. Well, if council has no other questions, I'll ask for a vote on Order 16162. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Lori. Move on to Order 16163. Order approving a bid from Transco Business Technologies for the lease purchase of multi-functional copiers with service contracts for the town office for an amount not to exceed $298.48 per month for 60 months. Take a motion, please?
Second.
Shelley?
Yes. So before you is our multi-functional equipment bid. Who knew that it would be so exciting here at the office? We started this in the spring when we were contemplating our budget and we saw the copiers. They have a sense about them where they know when a municipality is talking about copiers. They all came in and they all started wooing us. We went through the formal bid process. We outlined what our needs were. And on July 28th, it all came to a conclusion when they sharpened their pencils and put their best proposal forward. Sophie and I were able to sit in that meeting to open the bids and they were allowed to be creative because as we went through the process, they visited our municipality. They also got to see what we were currently using and make suggestions on how things could be revamped and what you see in front of you is a result of this process. The recommendation is to go with Transco Business Technologies. They are located in Herman. They had actually put forward a proposal for three machines, which would take care of each of the floors and also take care of our motor vehicle printing at the front counter, which is changing over per the state. So that was a concern of ours. They also have an IT department that can be here within a half an hour to 40 minutes with a call. Their turnaround time of replacement of a machine going down is great. If a machine goes down, I'll have another machine within the day. Depending on the timeframe, if it's near the end of the day, it would be the next morning. And I really was impressed with the references that they provided. They do currently take care of the city of Bangor as well as many other municipalities that are as busy as we are. So when I look at the needs at the counter and the needs of the other departments that all connect into this copier, I think that they would be a good option. Does anyone have questions?
Sophie has a question.
Well, I don't really have a question. I just want to add. It is very interesting that this took as much time as it did to get to this point. Shelley is very patient. We originally contemplated in the approved FY17 budget, purchasing a machine outright and there's $7,000 in the budget to do that. When we started looking, we began to see and talking to other towns that our experience is not unusual, that five or six years in, your machine is worn out. The technology is no longer compatible with some of the software platforms that we use. And so many communities are moving towards a lease arrangement on photocopies because when you get to the end of five or six years, you're looking to upgrade technology anyway. And just so you're aware, we, we don't use, we have very few small desktop printers. We have linked our desktops and our laptops into the copiers because it's cheaper to print per page to do it that way. So when we, when Shelley constructed her RFP, we asked for both a lease arrangement and an outright purchase arrangement. And for the machines that we're looking at, which meet our needs in terms of some color, for example, up in the town manager's office, we print with color on occasion, so we want to have that capability. But downstairs, it's not as important. We wanted the machines to be able to scan because we think that that, we use that function a lot. So we were able to, for the $250, we're actually meeting Nancy's needs, which we thought we were going to try to meet next year, this need and Shelley's need for the motor vehicle printer before, when we didn't even have that identified for the capital budget, all in a way that ultimately will save us money. The reason that this is on the agenda is because we would need to reclassify payments that'd be coming out of capital equipment and as long as you're okay with that, we wanted to make sure you knew it was a lease as opposed to a, an outright purchase. And the total, the total is still under my authority. However, at the end of the day, where we're changing how we're spending money, we wanted to talk to council. Shelley did a really nice job through this process.
Does anyone have any questions for Shelley? Shelley, I had a question about the license. So what's happening with motor vehicles?
So what we have right now at the front counter is we have what's called a CORD, Motor Vehicle Registration. motor vehicle registration. When we print, we print on the old dot matrix printers, and it prints four copies. One goes to the state, we give one to the customer, we file one in the excise tax file, and then, of course, the other one is filed so that if a customer loses their registration and we need to refer back to it, we have it filed by Alpha. The state is looking at going to a laser-type registration, which is actually a paper copy. So a lot more of the information will be housed on an electronic system versus having all of that paper. Now, the paper that we have in our office for motor vehicles, we have to retain for five years. So you can imagine the volume of space that that takes. So the state is trying to push everyone, and they themselves are trying to go to a more user-friendly, less-paper-type registrations process. And so this new printing capability would allow us to stay, you know, with the state as they bake their transition.
Great. Well, and if you're making Nancy happy, that's key for us. There's no other questions or comments. I will take a vote on Order 16163. All those in favor of making Nancy happy? Yeah. Shelley's happy, too. Thank you, Shelley. Moving on to Order 16164. Order approving the purchase of election equipment, polling booths, guardrails, post-signage, and sign banners in the amount of $5,440 to be drawn from the elections reserve account. This will make Shelley happy. I'll take a motion on Order 16164.
So moved. Second.
All right. Shelley?
Okay. So on August 10th of 2016, we heard back from the Secretary of State's office, and as you know, we have been approved to move forward with merging the polling place for this presidential election at U-Maine. Part of our PR for that is we have been advertising, we've gotten things in the Orno Observer, tax bills are hopefully going out the end of the week, and we're going to have an insert in there. So we don't have anybody wandering around lost on Election Day. We're also working very diligently downstairs to make sure our absentee voting process is quick and easy and user-friendly, so that if there is someone that just can't go out on that day, for whatever reason, they're able to vote ahead of time. In that regard, last year, you all approved me purchasing the new quad polling booths, as well as the stanchions and the signage. And we have had those at the last, I would say, three elections. They have received very positive feedback. I have heard from residents in the community that they like them, they think they're bright, they think they're professional, they're very pleased to have a polling place that they walk into, and they know what the matter of business is on the floor. And so when we look at our voting list, our voting list is around 9,200 residents on any given day. When you had approved the stanchions and the polling booths the last time and the signs, we had only factored in about 6,500 registered voters. If you allow me to make another purchase, then I will be able to round out our election supply, and we will have enough to take care of the U-Maine facility and have enough polling stations for everyone who is there, as well as the guardrails and the signage, which will be necessary to keep folks corralled, because I think on that day, it's going to be a challenge to keep some of them corralled. So it's really nothing new for information. It's the same booths, it's the same stanchions, it's just completing the purchase that we originally had started.
Any questions or comments from council?
Those voting booths cost 400 something dollars apiece.
Actually, good question. I believe that our polling booths, the quads, are actually around 800 apiece.
Wow.
So each one of those is $800, and then when you factor in the shipping to get them here, that would be the cost. So each booth does service four stations, which is 200 voters. So when you're looking at a quad and what are you getting for your money, you're able to service 200 voters.
And one of those sections is lower to deal for handicap accessibility, isn't it?
Yes. Yes. And if you remember, the last proposal that I had submitted, they were white and they really didn't have very good markings, they weren't real easily, they weren't easy to determine where you would go for handicap accessibility. The ones that we have are the red, white, and blue, they have the nice signage on them. And we put chairs at them, so whether someone needs that, they have the ability to sit or stand.
Great.
Is there any problem with people writing on the booths? I know the old booths we used to have, I used to have to go in and erase things that people would write on the booths.
Well, interesting you would say that, because I have not seen that, where folks actually stand and they, you know, they see. But when I'm folding them up, I see where the little kids write underneath. So I'm going to have to clean them underneath. And I've also had a resident express that she'd like to see us do our pens differently and where we put them on the booth. And so I found a vendor that I think would take care of that. So the pens are easily found, because when folks walk up to vote, they don't want to be searching for a pen and looking around. So we're going to take care of that as well.
Great. And just in aside, Shelley, will anything go up on the website about the new voting location?
Oh, yes. Yep. That is going to happen. We're also going to reach out to our local media and make sure that folks hear it through the newspapers and any methodology that we can. I was in a meeting today, Tom Spitz was there, and we actually know that they are doing some PR over at the university as well.
Great. So I would just say, Cindy, that it recently went out in the Orno Observer, and as I think Tom Perry, Councilor Perry, eloquently put during the public hearing, that this, while not perhaps the best solution that everybody would love to see, is the best of the solutions that are available. So I've already received some comment from individuals that are not happy with the move. And so Shelley and I chatted about that earlier today, and we're just going to make sure we do a really good job advertising the options between the Community Connector, which is going to have free fairs, and the efforts to make people aware of how to get there and the signage, as well as the ability to vote absentee. Shelley is working at that. But every household in Orno got the Observer, which on the front page talked about the fact that the polling location was changing.
Some of us haven't read our Observer yet, but we will go home and do that.
Yes, there's a full page. And as I said earlier, they will be receiving the little insert with their tax bills as well.
Great. All right. There's no other questions or comments? I'll take a vote on Order 16164. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to Order 16165. Order approving the purchase and installation of a fire department vehicle exhaust system from Air Cleaning Specialists of New England LLC of Hanover, Massachusetts, in an amount not to exceed $25,000, to be drawn from Capital Equipment Reserve. I will take a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
And we get, we get a slideshow? Video?
Just a few pictures.
Pictures. Wow. We're a good-looking group. Oh, now we're getting closer. Back up, back up.
The old fellow.
Oh, there we go.
Good evening. Rob St. Louis Fire Chief. This evening, I'm here to ask approval from the council to repair the current exhaust system that is in our fire station for our vehicles. The current system has been in there since the building was built, so we have a few repairs that need to be done. And the company that put it in no longer exists, so we can't get parts from them. So the air system specialists out of Massachusetts are able to provide us with a system which we can add on to the current system we have. So what we're looking to do is to set up six drop systems, hoses, that hook to each piece of apparatus. What this does, if you notice the picture in the upper left, that hose comes from the ceiling of some ductwork, and it hooks on to the apparatus in that bay. It's hooked on there by a magnet, and that would be the one in the upper right-hand corner. And what happens is when the truck goes out, when the doors open up, there's an exhaust system that comes on that forces all the exhaust fumes outside, so it doesn't go upstairs in the living quarters, which is where the, you know, the kitchen is and the bunk rooms. So it forces all the exhausts outside. And what happens, it goes along that rail system, which is above the trucks, and when it gets to the end, it has a shut-off which will release the magnet, and the hose comes off the truck. So what's happened currently is that the magnets are wearing out, so it doesn't stay on the truck. Also, the hose is being stretched because the magnets aren't releasing it, so causing holes in the hose. So the exhaust system currently isn't operating properly, so we're getting the exhaust fumes in the station. So we looked into replacing the whole system. The whole system was going to be roughly around $52,000 to replace. We came, made some phone calls, and the system out of Massachusetts, like I said, can provide drops, six drops, from the current system that's in the ceiling, the motor system. And for the, just, we're hoping, well, under $25,000, we can go ahead and outfit all six drops to get the system back up and running. That also will allow us to have a warranty on the system. So that's what I'm asking for.
Anyone have a question? I had one question. So the, it says six hose drops at $5,520. So that's like over $30,000. Are we getting a-
Should be 30, yeah, $3,520.
That's my stumbling fingers. I'm sorry.
All right. Caught you. Okay. Does anyone else have any questions or comments?
Now I'm confused. It's $25,000 we're going to spend, but-
Max, in the information we were given-
Yeah.
It had said six hose drops at $5,520. And it's supposed to be, it was a typographical error.
Oh, okay.
It was supposed to be $3,520.
Okay. All right. Now I'm unconfused.
I had another question, but I forgot it, so it couldn't have been that important. All right. Hearing no other questions or comments by council, I will take a vote on Order 16165. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
Thank you for the slideshow. All right. We're moving on to future agenda items and items of concern. Jeff, do you have any items of concern?
No, I don't. Thank you.
All right. Tom, do you have any items of concern?
I'll pass also.
Sam?
I'm fine.
Tom?
Just an update on the Civil War Monument, when it's going to be relocated.
Yes. I had a chance to talk with Rob Bjorksa. His hope is to get it in the ground in the next month. He has done the preliminary planning, he knows where it's going to go, he just needs to line up some vendors, because we're able to do it because people are volunteering some of their time and talents. But his goal is definitely to get it into its position this fall.
Will we have any sort of dedication or anything? Will the Historical Society have-
I don't know what the Historical Society has planned. I would hope that we could jointly do something, or they could do it and we could show up. They've put an awful lot of effort into getting the monument restored, and when you see it, it's pretty amazing. And on top of what they had done, the base had been defaced, it had some profanity all through it, and a couple of our Public Works folks spent an awful lot of time and elbow grease to clean it up. It looks really, really good.
Great.
Nice to hear that.
Maybe we can get some photos when it's in place to put on the website. Clint, do you have any items of concern? All right. Move on to public petitions. Don't believe we have any. Moving on to public comments. Susan? You missed us last month, didn't you?
I did. Susan, it's actually notified that the meeting was moved to the first week, like completely spaced, unfortunately. Which is rather unfortunate, because one of my topics, I have a couple of concerns this month, and one of them I actually happened upon, I think it was at the end of the first week of the month, where I had read a news report in the online media resource entitled The Guardian, and they had a report in which they had a map of the entire United States. And within that map, they had highlighted counties throughout the United States in which there are notable high populations of HIV/AIDS. And I was rather alarmed to notice there were several counties of the state of Maine highlighted on that map. And those counties included Washington County, Waldo County, Somerset County, and Kennebec And I mention such simply because also, several months ago, perhaps six or seven months ago, there was a report pertaining to a town in Indiana, Austin, Indiana, which is a rural town, not a high population. And within a matter of months, there was suddenly a cluster population, a considerable percentage of the town, something like 200 people, within months, suddenly diagnosed with HIV/AIDS. And most of those cases were drug-related. But what was alarming about Austin, Indiana, is some of those people diagnosed with HIV/AIDS were under the belief that, they considered AIDS to be a gay disease, something only homosexuals and dirty people got. So in 2016, there are people in the mindset that an illness would have some sort of cognition, or that sickness could select who could be infected and who wouldn't be, which is why I bring such to the public's attention at the moment. You know, some people are rather squeamish about human biology, and that squeamishness kind of breeds ignorance, and ignorance does not aid in disease control. I also called authorities within each of those counties to inform them of such law enforcement in terms of if they have to handle people, it's probably wise to wear gloves and such. And I also inquired, you know, have those officers noticed? News reports have informed there's been notable escalation of drug use within the state of Maine, though there's also the concern of body trafficking, prostitution, whichever term someone wants to mention, you know? And with HIV/AIDS, there's also unprotected sex. You know, such may not be concerns amongst the married population in Maine, though not every citizen of the state of Maine is married. And, you know, most likely many people, that there's most likely a considerable percentage of the population who is both single and sexually active. So inclined to mention that to the population in terms of, you know, care for one's health, that often person's health is what a person does in their day-to-day.
Yep.
So that was my first concern. And the second concern, one that's like the metaphorical dead horse, is that of substance abuse. I actually spoke a couple weeks ago with Mr. Quince pertaining to, as the new students have arrived, you know, I have witnessed substance abuse from my neighbors, which is a little concerning. Not thrilled to see such in close proximity. which is a little concerning, um, not thrilled to see such in close proximity. A matter of days after that, mentioning that concern, as I was out shopping, um, the street on one evening was extremely loud, and I heard explosions that I'm quite certain were gunshots, and in close proximity to my property. And there was, uh, some pedestrian traffic, so I kind of like walked around to have a look to see, you know, what type of commotion might be occurring on my street, and I saw a young man running down the street very quickly, and I kind of called him up for to inquire, you know, had, did he also hear the gunshots and whatnot? And, um, one thing Mr. Kuntz said, when we were walk, when we saw one another shopping, is, well, there may be substance abuse occurring, but are people safe in the neighborhood as well? Well, the young person running along the street, his hand was lacerated, and he was bleeding profusely, and, um, it took a bit of a conversation with him, in terms of, I offered to call for 911. He didn't seem interested in having a medical team assist him. He said his friends would assist him. I inquired, well, do your friends know how to dress a wound? And as I started saying, asking him questions such, do your friends know how to dress a wound? You probably shouldn't be running if you're run, if you're bleeding profusely. He then, he then asked me to call 911 for him, because he was quite, quite cut up. There's that concern. And, uh, it was, uh, I think the following weekend after that incident, I returned to my property, and I noticed my neighbor collapsed on its doorstep. It, he'd say, collapsed on his doorstep. I garage my vehicle, bring some things into that house, have a conversation on the telephone, look out my window, and this is about 10 or 15 minutes later, and the person hadn't moved at all. And honestly, I was a little concerned that the person might have overdosed on some, on a deadly substance. Um, so I cautiously approached the person, uh, he was also covered in vomit, not my favorite thing to witness, and, uh, as I kind of talked him into some consciousness, um, his roommate came to the door and started trying to tell me his, tell me he was fine. And I'm like, your roommate doesn't look particularly fine, he's covered in vomit and might need some medical assistance. And, uh, and he kept saying, no, he's fine, and I said, well, your roommate looks like he's overdosing on heroin. I was then told that I was rude, and then I was also told that I was just bothering them because they have long hair. Gosh, they should have seen me when I was their age. Um, so eventually the person was fine. Um, I did call officers despite and pleaded for a welfare check, uh, just because I recall years ago, in the city of Boston, a student at MIT actually died from alcohol poisoning.
Yep.
You know, so I mentioned such things in terms of, um, you know, I think some type of awareness should be brought to the young people in the town, because they have not, from what I've been witnessing, they've not been conducting themselves in a safe manner. Um, it's, yeah.
Thank you. We will keep that, we will make sure that people know that, but, and I understand happy birthday is.
Thank you.
Cindy, um, could, could I just mention one thing?
Sure.
Um, I just want to remind councilors that the Maine Municipal Association Convention, or Conference, is being held in Bangor this year at the Cross Center, October 6th, is it 6th and 7th, or 5th and 6th?
5th and 6th, and where it's so local, we're really hoping that councilors will attend.
It, it's an excellent, uh, conference, so if anybody is able to attend, I, I am planning on going and have registered, but I'd encourage people to go if they can.
Great.
Cindy, if I may, just, um, please do, um, register and make sure that they send the bill to the town, that's one of the few things we can cover for you. Um, I just want to bring folks' attention to next Monday, if I can. Next Monday, the 19th, at 6 o'clock, we're scheduled to have a council committee meeting. Um, we've got a couple of things that folks might be interested in. The first is, um, wanting to have a discussion with the committee about whether or not it wants to recommend that council take a position on question number two on the ballot. Um, we have some minor, um, administrative, um, issues that we just need some, staff just needs some council feedback on. We're going to talk about some changes in assessing services or the program that we offer. And the last one, which is, kind of feeds into some of what Susan was talking about, we're also going to have Josh, Chief Josh Ewing, and, uh, Rob St. Louis here to talk about, uh, public safety response, um, as, at the beginning of the school year. Um, we're seeing some trends that we want to make you aware of. But also, um, the chiefs, the Maine Chiefs of Police Association has, um, come out with a formal position on the question around legalizing marijuana, and we need some guidance from the town council on what, if any, um, position, not position, but what you want the town to say, because normally, we would talk about our, um, if the chief came out, if the Chiefs Association came out with a position, oftentimes, there's media that comes with that that talks about the public safety concerns. Um, we want to know where council wants us to sit on that spectrum.
Great. Oh, I know, Sophie, I had a question. The, um, calendar of dates, will that go out to council? It's in my packet?
So you've, you've got a hard copy tonight?
Oh, I did, I apologize.
And what we plan to do, especially for Councilor Spitz, because when we copy and paste it, evidently it miraculously shows up in his calendar program. Um, so, we will also do a copy and paste. Nancy will get that out to folks, as she always takes care of you.
Great, thank you. All right, we will now move to, um, executive session, MRS Title 1, Chapter 13, Section 405, 6D, to discuss collective bargaining negotiations with International Association of Firefighters, AFL-CIO Local 3106. I need a motion, please.
So moved, second.
All right, and we will not be coming back for any more business, just for the public to know. Um, so I need to take a vote. All those in favor of executive session, passes unanimously. We've got the time, yes? All right, thank you, we've, moving into the other room.